Meeting called to order. Happy Veterans Day for all of you who may have served or are currently serving. And with that, welcome and we'll get started with roll call.
Madam President, I find that all board members are present and accounted for.
Wonderful. Next we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I do ask that following the pledge, we, so you know, stay standing for a moment of silent reflection to honor those who have served. Mrs. Hackett, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and as a republic always extends one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is consent. Made a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have our Board Workshop, which will be brought to us by Dr. Dudley. And for the workshop, we are returning back to how we had been doing it previously. The Board is going to be sitting below with the Administrator, so we, it tends to lend itself better to a more conducive conversation setting. So with that, we will move on down.
And this evening, what I want to do is talk to you a little bit about our student achievement data. First, we'll start, we'll talk about I-Step, and then we'll get into more, some other pieces of student achievement data, and then we'll look at our student dashboard. All of this data that we'll talk about tonight is available for the public as far as...
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, is this good?
What do you think, Pam?
But all of the data that is available on our website. And so we'll talk a little bit about our dashboard and the data that's available there. So first of all, as you know, we, we'll start with our I-Step data. And I-Step is a, an assessment that is given in third through eighth grade. And it's given in the spring. There's actually two assessment windows. The Applied Skills Assessment Window is the first week of March, and then the Multiple Choice Assessment Window is the first week of May, the first full week of May. And as you may recall, the Multiple Choice, which is given online, we did have some snafus in the Multiple Choice where we had test interruptions from, and it was from the testing site, from CTB, and you may recall those test interruptions that we did have. CTB and the Department of Education did do a thorough analysis of the testing results to make sure, to determine whether or not those testing interruptions interfered with the students' test scores. And if they did determine that there was an issue with the testing interruptions, then they invalidated those students' tests. And we did have some students' tests that were invalidated, but overall, they found that the test interruptions did not negatively affect the test scores when they looked at them overall. And so we do have our test scores. The one piece that we do not have, that has not been released yet, we have the results yet, but they have not been unembargoed, are the science test results. The science test results were delayed with the testing issues that we had, but then also they needed to look at setting a new cut score because we had new science standards, and they, it was, so there were new questions based on those science standards. They set that cut score, and they just recently released that, and they're waiting for the rescore window to be over. So we will not talk about the fourth grade or the sixth grade science results today. We'll bring that back at a later time to look at those test results. So what I thought we could do is, because we're in our workshop session, is to look at our data, and we'll start with data for language arts, English Language Arts data for elementary, so third, fourth, and fifth grade. And you have a printed copy of your data, and you may want to pull it apart, unstable it, and look at third, fourth, and fifth grade language arts data, so your first three graphs, and with your partner, talk about what do you notice? What trends do you see? You have data from 2008 all the way through our 2012, '13. What trends do you see? What areas, what questions might you have? So just take a few minutes to look at third, fourth, and fifth grade as a group of data, and we'll kind of talk about it.
Okay.
I guess there's some questions.
I don't know if it's turned to the part of the child.
Sure they were.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah.
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 Well, I don't see growth.
I wonder in 2011, did they change how their scores were?
Yeah, but we're not, this doesn't show.
In 1011, 4.8, 4.4, then that, 5.7.
How are these kids doing?
It's like, do the same thing.
Then it fell back down to 4.9. So there's something like that.
That's what we're going to be looking at.
So we're looking at the same student.
Right. Same cohort groups.
Which is really exciting stuff, because then you can work, you can work, six, seven, eight.
From 1011.
Ten all the way through.
Seasonal entry.
And you can make real time decisions.
Because nine is just, it's back down.
Basically, you're, 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 you're.
But 11 and 12 is a pretty big year for everybody, for 1011.
Access to data from the former school.
1011 for, so there's a tendency for three, for these two grades, they, they, they changed the test.
Yeah.
Obviously, 1011 until 2020.
Well, yeah.
We don't, with the current model, we still, we still, college boards, and, 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 and,[716.13]
And what, when you look at the cohort piece, when you look at programmatically in sixth and seventh grade, you are still seeing trends in that, in the right direction, but then in eighth grade, it stays very stagnant. So is it, I mean, and as you said, you looked ahead to the 10th grade one as well, you know, one, looking at eighth grade, I-Step testing in the spring, is that where, you know, one of the things that they're, they're looking forward to high school, are, you know, you tell a fifth grader this is very important, it's one thing you tell an eighth grader, and, and they know it is very important and they do take it seriously, but are they putting, you know, as much effort? And because as we, you look at 10th grade, that is something too, we hear from high school teachers too, and I'll just jump ahead since we're talking about the 10th grade, where you can see, we don't have the same pass plus piece in that English 10, ECA, as we do the results, as we do in those other grade levels. So really, that is a good question of what's, what's happening in eighth grade, but then overall, what's happening in middle school?
Is there a possibility that the standards for which they're being tested, that the difficulty or the, their more higher order thinking than they were in the earlier grades?
Well, they, the test has not changed in I, for I-Step, for eighth grade. As you look at the types of questions or the standards, they have not changed now at the-
From six to eight.
From six to eight, yes. I mean, the difficulty at, from, you know, third to fourth, fourth to fifth, from all the grades moving upwards, the difficulty would get, based on the curriculum, more difficult, yes.
But as, I was thinking along your lines, has, is the test different in eighth grade?
Oh, man.
Yeah, is there more subjectivity as far as open-ended questions or anything different about the eighth grade I-Step plus? Because there's, I mean, it's consistent.
Right.
It's consistently different than sixth, seventh?
I mean, when you look at the blueprints of the tests, they're not significantly different as far as the way they have their open-ended questions, the weighting of those open-ended questions, they're typically about the, the same for each of the different grade levels in middle school. They're, so you're not seeing a, a significant change from the types of open-ended questions in, from sixth grade to eighth grade.
Okay. Amy, do we know if, if the eighth grade drops off like that across the state, or is it just in Carmel?
What, what the state releases is, and it's, and we, because we've been trying to get this both for our I-Step, but then also especially for our ECA results, they do not disaggregate it through pass plus. They do the pass and the did not pass, but we don't get the, we don't get to see the pass plus overall pieces, which would help us, because that, that is a good way to really measure how far away, you know, you know, how far above from the state are we? And they disaggregate it, just pass and did not pass.
Amy, just maybe taking it the next step. So, and we were talking, when we look at middle school, sometimes we try to separate out the sixth graders as the younger ones, how do we present a curriculum to meet their needs in a middle school, sixth, seventh, eighth setting? But possibly what we need to look at is our eighth and ninth graders, our last year of middle school and our freshman center. Have we, over the years, looked at that? Or is that something we need to look into the future?
Well, a, as far as curriculum goes, you're correct. In sixth grade, we have our humanities, which is our language arts and our social studies, so it's a double period. And they have the same teacher in our sixth grade classroom for both of those, and then they're tested in the English Language Arts for sixth grade. We have piloted in eighth grade a humanities curriculum at Creekside. We have piloted that the last couple of years, where it is a team teacher situation, where we have a social studies teacher alongside of a language arts teacher, where they have a larger group of students, and, and really integrate that curriculum to look at that. And we've not, I mean, that's a good question, to look at their data as compared to other regular eighth graders, to see, are you seeing a difference in that data? I think that's, that would be a good thing to really look at. In, as we look at the freshman center and our ninth grade curriculum, one of the things we've done in the last couple of years is we have revamped all of our curriculum maps in secondary to align them with the Common Core, but specifically looking at different programmatic changes in ninth grade, we have not looked at significant changes in what that, you know, the curriculum has changed because it now is aligned to the Common Core, but not specifically different types of groupings and stuff. We've not, like we have it, we've piloted at the eighth grade level.
Is I-Step aligned to the Common Core?
No, I-Step is not aligned to the Common Core, but as you can see, they've had the Common Core and they're, the results are about the same. Because really, when we look at I-Step, we know that I-Step is the bare min, that's the bare minimum. It's, it's, the I-Step results are meeting those Indiana standards, which the Common Core is at a much higher level. And so many would, you know, make the conclusion that if they can do the higher level at the Common Core, they can also do the I-Step. Now, one of the things, though, to make sure that our kids do have the opportunity to learn and they're not missing anything with our transition to Common Core, is we do have those transition guidelines to make sure that we're teaching, if there are certain concepts on I-Step, we're making sure that we're teaching those standards, so that they're not missing out on, and we want to make sure all of our students have that opportunity to learn. That's a good question.
As Amy and I were talking about, you know, one of our goals is to explore student growth models this year. As I'm talking to Greg about, I'd like to flip this thing over upside down on some of these areas. Look at a, a red area of five percent, just for reference. That's approximately 240 kids of a class, any, could be of any given class. That's a lot of kids. My interest is, of those 240 kids, where do they start out in, let's say, sixth grade? And how were they doing when they took this assessment in spring? Let's say they still end up in the red, that's still 240 of our kids that we want to do better, but we can't drill down and say, this is how much better they've done as a result of being in our classrooms, in this case, at Creekside, Clay, or Carmel Middle. And those are the growth models that we're going to be exploring. Amy and I have talked about that, you know, throughout the year, to date, three months. Looking at these and exploring these growth models, so that we can drill down. This is a basic skills test administered by state. We respect that. We're very proud of our kids and families and teachers and everyone by the fantastic scores as a result of that. I, we have, I think, a larger interest, though, because I'd like to know that five percent in 2011, 12, eighth grade Language Arts, oh, that is 240 students. Those are numbers now, I want, we want names by that and to see what we can do to see growth in those children as a result of being in our classrooms. We know they're growing, we just can't disaggregate that now. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Those are the kind of things and discussions we look forward to, and in a model that you can look at the students pre-K through 12 moving through our system.
And I think to piggyback on what Dr. Wall's saying too, is one of the things, as we drill down, right now, we're looking at this at a very high level. We're looking at it at a programmatic level. We're looking at cohorts that are not necessarily true cohorts. But as we drill down to the data and really look at the data, we do know that the students, the longer the students are with us, the better they do. In some of our schools, we do have higher mobility rates than in other schools. And when we truly drill down and look at those true cohorts of the students that we've had all along, we do see that those students are very successful. But we do have a lot of kids that are moving in, and we still need to make sure that they get the education that they need and that they're successful as well. And so how does that need to look differently?
Amy, just to jump on what, what Dr. Wall said, I know that in the past, because I was involved in this program at Creekside, administrators would look at kids who barely did not pass, you know, and mostly want children, students that didn't have IEPs, and work with a group during their study hall. And those, during those years, those specific kids were tracked. Well, I don't know if they were officially tracked, but the teacher in charge knew what their scores were before, it's Voltaire didn't know, but what their scores were before and then if they passed. So I know we have some information on some kids at some place. Now, the program as it was before is not there anymore, but do we still address, you know, those borderline kids?
Yes. Yes, we have different programs in elementary and middle, and then also in high school, where we have intervention programs and remediation programs. One of the things at the middle school that we now have is our reading success and our math success programs. And as we look at those students in our reading success for the students that have not passed I-Step, and how do, not, not only do the ones that have not passed I-Step, but also the ones that are reading below grade level, how are we getting them additional help? And then as far as with the math as well, we look at did not pass I-Step. And then we also look at the kids that are maybe passing I-Step, but they're only, they're not at least 25 points, making at least 25 points gains, to make sure that they are also successful in, in both of those areas. At the elementary, we also have a combination of intervention programs as well as remediation programs, depending on the students' needs. The intervention programs typically are during the day where we have extra time built in for those students to be successful. And then we also have what you might consider a jumpstart program, you know, six weeks, eight weeks before we actually have I-Step, where we go back and we review specific concepts so that they can be successful to look at those stu, individual student groups.
And so do we watch that data? I take it to see what programs are working and what aren't, what's at work?
Yes, yes. Okay. Well, let's move on and look at math in third, fourth, and fifth grade. So look at elementary. Okay, so let's come back together and talk about math. What are the, some of the things? Anything you, that stuck out or?
Oh, thank you. I did notice, when you look at the cohort group from grade four in 11, 12, to the group in 12, 13, that went up from 48.9 to 68.4. That is huge jump from fourth to fifth grade. So, but I did notice, and I did notice that the lowest number went down to 1.7. And that's the smallest I've ever seen it. So that's very good.
Not just that one year, but always from fourth grade to fifth grade.
They're just really good.
But a, but a huge jump, a huge jump from fourth to fifth grade.
And a huge, look at the red all the way across.
Yeah. Like almost, not real down. Well, and one of the things that Mrs. Dallas and I were talking about is, yes, you can have that guaranteed viable curriculum so that you have those opportunities for all students, but it's really making sure that you have a responsive teacher that is responding to the needs of the students. And in making sure that they're looking at what, what is this student presenting at this point in time that they need, and then making sure they're meeting their needs. I mean, because you can have the best materials curriculum in the world, but if you don't have a great teacher to deliver that, then, you know, you might as well not even bother with those pieces. So those are some of the pieces that we're looking at.
Okay, now, I know you said this, but when they, when do they take this test? Is it a spring test?
Yes, they take, I-Step in the spring, they take the applied skills in March, and then they do the multiple choice in the first week of May.
So there's a, there's a maturity factor too, as they get to fifth grade. They, they've seen the material as it cycles around.
Yes, yes. And, and all of the testing for this last year was online, the last two years it was online, but the switch would have been in 2010, 11, where we did some grade levels online. And so it, looking at the online assessment, we're not really seeing a difference between the paper pencil and the online. We're not seeing a difference in the scores.
For math, I know they were using the I-Step scores for placement for middle school mathematics classes, either the regular course, the, which is already accelerated, the advanced and then the honors. How reliable has using this data been for placement?
Right. And, and that's one data point that we use to look at placement in the middle school. One of the things, we didn't have that data point when we did scheduling this year, because we did not have the I-Step scores. But the other, I mean, it's, it's, as we look at one data point within, we also look at the students' grades, we look at the students' end-of-the-year assessment on, on the everyday math to determine, you know, how much did they master over the course of the year? So it, it's one data point in a variety of other data points, but it's not the only one. Because we don't want to make sure, we want to make sure that when we're placing students, we're using those multiple data points. Okay, let's move on to middle school math, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so, and all of those states are factoring into this?
Yes.
You know, and so, but we do have those different levels.
But that's good, because we need to, the lower student who's not getting all of that, not understanding of that, and that's really good. So that's our sixth grade?
Well, they, we have the advanced math in elementary, so that's where they're paid for one way, but what's in the art and the G C five, something to, 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 to grade levels in math. But then in sixth grade, we have a, 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 Or math, um, a part of the everyday math, there is mental math.
Mm-hmm.
It may not be at the beginning of the day, but that's part of the everyday math, um, program where they, it might be at the beginning of math class. Um, and some of the other pieces from math, so I would say, yes, all of them do have that mental math.
Is that part of the seventy-five minutes, or that's in addition to?
Yes, no, that's part of the seventy-five minutes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Um, but some of the other pieces with math, too, um, is in elementary, we do have advanced math, um, for all of our grade levels. Last year, we started with K explorations as well, which was our advanced math, which was our first year in kindergarten to look at that. And we're continuing those kids, um, in, in kindergarten. And we do have high percentages in, um, that advanced math. When they get into middle school, and even in our, um, fifth grade year as well, students have the opportunity to test in that they may be working two grade levels above. So when they move into middle school, um, they may take advanced math, or they may, um, test into honors math as well. So for a sixth grader in advanced math, they would be taking seventh grade math. But a, a sixth grade honors math student would be taking pre-algebra. Um, and about fifty percent of our eighth grade students take algebra as an eighth grader. We have about fifty percent that take algebra. So looking ahead, if any of you did look ahead at the algebra E C A, that's a combination of, um, eighth grade, ninth grade, some seventh grade students, because if they're in, um, honors math in seventh grade, they'd be taking algebra, and maybe some tenth graders that are retaking that algebra. So that's a combination of that algebra E C A one.
Do we have data avail, I mean, assuming we do, the data available to, that splits the E C A up into the seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth grade components?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, and typically, our middle school students that take our E C A, we usually, um, we have about a hundred percent pass rate for E C A, not pass plus, but a hundred percent pass rate. Um, if, if some years, we might have ninety-nine percent, we might have one student or so. But typically, um, when they take it in eighth grade, they pass the algebra one E C A. And then the other piece, too, just for your information, they take both eighth grade, um, I step math, and they also take algebra one E C A. They're given at, at different times, but they are in the spring, um, given all of those assessments.
I mean, one of the things we discussed, uh, looking at the difference between math and language arts, um, are there, are there populations of students that might, we were focused probably on the, uh, the red, the students who did not pass. Are there students, um, who are not included in the language arts assessments, for example, who are the math? And we're thinking specifically of English language learners, maybe?
Yes, our, um, English learner students, if they are new to the United States within the last year, so if they've lived in the United States for less than a year, um, as long as they take the Lost Links assessment, which is our, um, English language learner, uh, assessment, they are excused from taking the I step English language arts. However, they're not excused from taking the I step math, or if they're in their testing year, social studies or science. So those are only for our English language learners that have been in the country for less than a year. Um, and we have, it, it's, it's, it's a small number. I mean, we don't have, it's, it's not a huge number, but those students are excused. And that's only as long as they take Lost Links. And so unfortunately, um, we do have some students that come after the Lost Links test window is over. And they've been here less than a year, and we have to put all of it in front of them, which is really not the best situation, yeah. Yeah, it's not.
Would you explain the E C A testing for all acronym?
Yes, I'm sorry.
People in the audience, including me?
The E C A tests are our high school qualifying graduation exams. And our students have to take, um, our, their end of course assessment, so it's, they take the assessment after they've, um, completed the course. And so, um, in order to graduate from high school, you need to pass the algebra one E C A. You also have to pass the English ten E C A, and you have to participate in the biology one E C A. You are not required to pass the biology one E C A to graduate, but you do have to participate in math. And E C A is the end of course assessment. E C A. End of course assessment, yes.
Are, are there, um, policies in place for makeups in case a student is absent on the, uh, E C A dates?
Yes, um, that, well, we, because it is, they're required to pass the E C A if, um, we have a testing window. So if they're absent for the whole testing window, then they miss that, but then they have the opportunity to retest in, um, our next testing window. We do, um, have retest, um, like, for example, in summer school, we offer algebra again in summer school. And then at the end of our summer school, the students have the opportunity to retake the E C A. And we did have a couple, um, eighth grade students that missed the whole testing window for E C A, and then they retook it in the summer. And so we, we have that in place. But the students have the opportunity to retake it as many times as they need it until they run out of time in order to pass both the algebra one and English ten.
You might be getting ahead of things here, but I didn't, had noticed that, um, we do have one more year data for the biology end of course assessment than the English and algebra one.
Yes.
Um, why is that? And also, why do you just need to participate in biology? Is that because Indiana emphasizes maybe that?
Um, yes, I, as far as for the qualifying exams, it's the participation, and also as far as, um, when they're looking at A Y P or, um, adequate yearly progress, they're only looking at the English and the math, they're not looking at the science and social studies in the lower grades. It's just more based on the participation. And that's, um, Indiana, you know, I'm not sure exactly why they've made those, um, requirements. But to go to your other question, as far as why is there one more year data for biology one? Um, for the English ten E C A and the algebra one E C A, in two thousand eight and nine, that year, the test was significantly different than it was starting in two thousand nine. And our data, um, where it wasn't broken out into the past plus, and so it wasn't fair to put that data alongside of it. But the biology one E C A did stay consistent. One of the things, um, looking at the biology one, and I'll jump ahead here, um, one of the things that in two thousand twelve, thirteen, their, their standards actually changed in two thousand twelve, thirteen, but the biology one assessment did not change. But as you can see, um, looking at our results, um, actually, our results are better from, um, eleven, twelve to twelve, thirteen. But the, the actual standards did change, um, slightly, but the exam did not change for the E C A. Yes. Um, so mov- moving forward, looking at, um, do you want to look at the ECAs as a whole? I know we've been talking about those, or do you want to move on? Do you want to look at the ECAs as a whole?
No, actually, they have to not only pass algebra one, they have to pass algebra two and have four years of that.
Amy, we have a question, and it came up in just our discussion of the, the E C A courses. Have we trended students who join the Carmel Clay schools only in high school? And how they have been doing, um, as compared to those who have been with us for, you know, since elementary school?
Um, he, when, as we drill down and look at that data, we do know our students that are with, the longer they're with us, the more successful that they are. Um, and also to keep in mind, when you're looking at the E C A scores, as, as we mentioned earlier, students have the chance to retake the test multiple times. So the results that you're looking at for, this is all spring assessment. You're, you're, we're comparing spring assessment, because we offer the E C A in, we're getting ready in early winter. We offer it again in the spring, and then we offer it again in the summer. The data that you're looking at on all these graphs are spring. However, included in this data are some students that are retaking it, maybe for the second time or the third time, um, based on, it's not drilled down. And we can, we could do that and just do first time testers on the E C A, and we can drill that down, but it's really looking at all students that took it that spring.
Do they get any credit for scoring a certain level, like multiple, taking the S A Ts multiple times to achieve a higher score?
Um, no, they either, they just have to retake it if they do not pass, but they do not get any credit or any, um, special significance.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, as, as far as to graduate with an academic honors, it, you don't need to have a pass plus on your E C A or anything. That's not a requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so if you can separate them like that, can you also like separate them by graduating classes? So we could look at this year's sophomores and see how they did as opposed to the people, and take out the retakers and just the graduating seniors of two thousand thirteen? How did they score on that?
Yes, yes, we could drill down to and look specific at the graduating.
My other question, did we start the new math program in two thousand eleven, twelve at the high school?
Yes, yes, this will be the third year of the math program for both middle school and high school.
Okay.
And also with the, another piece, like, don't, coming back to Mrs. Hackett's question about special programming, um, for, another change that happened with the math. Um, in the past, we would have certain students that, um, needed it. They would take algebra one over three semesters rather than two semesters. So they would take pre-algebra, it would be a pre-algebra one semester, then second semester of that freshman year would be algebra one, one, one. And then they'd take algebra one, two. Um, the state changed that you can no longer do that. So another programming change for those students that need that extra help in math, they actually have a double period. They have what's called math explorations, and then they also have the algebra one. So they have a double block, they have math every day, basically. Um, and so they have the same teacher where, and it's not two separate programs, and we use a different math program, which is called Cognitive Tutor, which has an online piece to it, um, but they have math every day for ninety minutes rather than every other day for ninety minutes.
Just historical perspective, we did at one point have a two-year algebra one program. Where over four semesters, they took algebra one, and then we did have to cut it to the three. And then the state further ruled, and now we're, where we're at.
Right, right. And in some cases, too, for certain kids, you know, you, the typical student would take algebra one, geometry, algebra two. Certain kids take algebra one, and they go right into algebra two and continue that on, and sometimes that's a better path. And then they come back and take geometry, and sometimes that is a better, um, path. And our math expert here.
We tried that several years back, too, and it, it, it really does depend a whole lot on the teacher and the way they're delivering it to the students and the students' effort and, and abilities, too. Different ways to success for different people.
Okay, um, and moving forward, looking at, um, take some time just to look at the, um, S A T scores. And you have several different slides on the S A T scores, where you have, um, this would be the average combined S A T score. And then the red, um, line graph on there are the number of students participating. Then you have it broken out by the three different areas, critical reading, math, and writing. And then you have it compared to the nation, and then also compared to Indiana or the state. So look at those, and, um, what, um, trends are you seeing there?
Uh, definitely a drop. Even though social thinking, more to take, you know, that problem, you wouldn't have taken it. Which is causing. Because some of these kids may have been a lot of the topics, would just take a year of a, that missing score. So that's why those are higher.
Yeah, but my, it is a significant, um, we have this long time here, but if you look here, we only have eighty percent. To have a, you know, ninety-four percent case, the trauma is only worth it. So we have, so it's not that, you know, when you're looking at it over time, yes, you do have this one big jump here. And it does, you know, consist of a little, it's not that.
When we had, um, our, this was students who took, uh, P S A, and were, um, national, um, seventy-five. We got like fifty of them.
Yes, and out of these years, some of them were chewed.
That year and this year, this past year, we got forty-two points. This year, this is half, this year.
Was it that year or was it that year, fifty or something? Because that would have been their junior year. They would have taken it, junior year, but it was, um, but they're honored in the fall.
Senior.
Senior year, so like.
So this year, we are honoring forty.
I think six, I think so, but that, that, this would have been whatever last year's number was. That's not this year's number, that would be this year's number over here. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. So, okay, then, average scores, this is math, writing is here. So again, writing is just, from here to there, it's low.
Four points, yes.
But still, for a trend, it did a lot. This, stayed, stayed pretty much the same, except for where they were. Critical reading. Five fifty-five, still better than that one.
But it went all over the place.
Yes.
No, no, I thought you meant that's what the score was.
Critical reading. This is a, this is a nation, this is a state. So we are consistently higher. That is huge. This was. Yeah, and I used to, because we've got, it's just this writing, I think, we just need to, as they do, work on writings. Even though they need to do it across the nation, state and nation, I think this is someplace, you know. And I know we used to do six grades of writing, you know, and all those other programs where we used to do a lot of questions. It's hard to work it in, because writing takes time, you know, to, to do it well.
And this type of writing is. What is your evidence? How do you write towards a compliment? I mean, if you have the type of writing. Hopefully, it's better, we definitely have a different type of writing.
Yes, it is. To be able to prove where is the S A T. Yeah.
Okay, let's come back to other things you've noticed about S A Ts.
They're both just college predictors.
Yes.
No, you're, no, that's.
The one thing that we really noticed on, uh, you said A C, uh, S A T, right?
Mm-hmm.
Was just how significantly over the last five years, the percentage of students participating, um, has increased, you know, by fourteen percentage points or so. Um, and the performance has, um, the average performance has, um, you know, maintained. Now, it's, it's dropped off a little bit here in the last couple of years, but if you look at just eight, nine compared to twelve, thirteen, you're, you have fifteen percent more kids participating, and your scale score, or your average combined score is roughly the same, which is remarkable, given the number of additional kids that you've, that have taken that assessment.
And we jumped ahead, Greg, and the A C T is the same way. That's, that's impressive. The increasing number of students taking it and the score actually going up as that increased, that's, that's significant.
Other trends that you might have noticed, or? Well, we have a question, not necessarily a trend, and we were discussing this over here. Are we doing anything to encourage all of our students to take one or the other test? Because it doesn't look like, I'm sure there's a group of students who take neither.
Right, and, and typically, um, in, in Indiana and Carmel High School, as you can see by the two, the percentages of our students, typically, our, um, many of our students take the S A T, and they're very much encouraged as a predictor, um, as they're looking at, um, it, you know, in order to be considered at I U, Purdue, Ball State, any of the state schools, you need to have your S A T scores. Um, the A C T scores, many times, like, it's very different, like in Illinois, all of the students take A C T. Um, in Indiana, in a Carmel High School, many of the students that take the A C T are the ones that are looking more at the liberal arts or the higher level, um, colleges or universities, that they require, um, certain scores on the A C T. Um, so it, it just really depends, but we are certainly encouraging our students to, um, take the S A T and the A C T, and, um, also taking them multiple times, because when the colleges use, most colleges, when they look at their scores, they take what they call the super score, which is the best in all of the different areas. So let's say you scored a five fifty in math the first time, and you scored a six seventy in math the second time. They take the higher of the scores, and they call it their super score when they're looking at admissions. So we are encouraging our students to take, um, the S A T and also, if need be, the A C T multiple times.
One other question with regards to the A C T. I do know our Indiana State Schools have guaranteed scholarships for those who score thirty-one or better on the A C T. Um, do we publicize or share that? Are students aware of that? Because that was news to me a, a year ago. So I'm really trying to trend my children to take both and do well.
Yes, um, well, and, and they have to, yes, absolutely. They, not only do they have to have the score on the A C T, but they also have to have the grade point average as well to get that, that guaranteed scholarship. Trust me, I know. She had the score, but didn't have a G P A, but anyway, anywho. But yes, um, in, we have, um, academic nights, and they start having academic nights at the high school, starting with freshman parents. And they also have the academic, um, days with the students as well, preparing them and helping them prepare for, um, college. And they share that information with students, but they also then share that information with parents as well as they're preparing for, um, college and, and looking at, you know, what do the universities expect? And then they also have a really great database as far as, um, looking at Carmel High School students and where they're, they get accepted, and what was their grade point average at Carmel High School and their S A T, you know, their average S A T and A C T score. So they really, um, can drill down and give students kind of a range of what they should be shooting for.
Can I just add to that, um, from experience, too? You know, there's a group of parents that go to that parent night freshman year, and then you sit there and think, why are there not more parents here? Because, and, and why is your kid not sitting right next to you? And it's on the website, so you can have your child sit right next to you, watch it, but, um, and they do get it during the day, if they're paying attention or not. But it is an eye opener to say, if you're gonna, especially for the state schools, if I need, I can't pretend I'm gonna go to I U and not plan for it, or I can't pretend I'm gonna go to Purdue and not plan for it. And it gives you black and white of what you're shooting for, and it goes up every year, so, um, what was the other thing I was gonna say? I forgot exactly, except that it's amazing, it's the same, you see the same parents there, you see the same parents at, I don't know, awareness side or the P T O meeting or whatever. But, um, that information is there, and it's so clearly stated, and you wish that you can knock on everyone's door and say, just listen to this. And, and, and then your path is, um, it's pretty darn clear. I mean, you know exactly, a student would know exactly, I shouldn't say exactly what to do, but you know, well, do I go ahead and take this honors class? Or do I need to watch that G P A more, or, um, so it's a more informed decision of where I might want to go, which changes over the four years, but if you have a plan and a direction. But it's really insightful, if you can stay tuned from the very beginning and have your students see that, your child see that right from the beginning, so that it's not just you saying it, it's a counselor saying, these are the facts. Well, I know what the other thing I was gonna say is, and then to use the counseling services there, because, um, you, if you're looking at, I don't know, X Y Z school, you can go and see what, um, high schoolers, Carmel High School students applied there last year. You don't have the name, you have their G P A and their test scores, and, you know, these four made it, and these three didn't, and where do you fall in this? And, um, is that something to shoot for then, or is that, you know, to continue your search? So really, if you use the services, it tells you a lot.
Okay, and then just moving forward, looking at the A C T, we talked a little bit about, um, A C T. But as you can see, our rates did go, move up as far as the number of students that, um, took A C T from between two thousand and eight to, um, two thousand and twelve, um, quite significantly, where our scores have stayed pretty much consistent. Um, and then this neck, this very colorful, pretty graph, um, shows our A C T scores over the years by the different subject areas. As you can see, and we have some, um, you know, in, in two thousand and ten, you can see we have some spikes, um, which we saw consistent with our S A T as well, um, scores. And seeing those, but looking overall, and it looks, the spikes looks much higher because it's a much smaller range. And you need to keep that in mind, too, that where we're looking for between twenty-five point three and twenty-five point nine, we're not talking about, it just looks bigger than.
The bars are deceiving.
Yes, yes, because you're, you're, what is much smaller?
Scale.
Yes, your scale. And then this, um, as you can see, the comparisons of our students compared to the nation and then also to Indiana. And you can see our students do score significantly above. And you can see our students do score significantly above those areas.
Amy, I had a question about that. And Brian and I were talking because it might have to do a little bit with the skewing, except that on the SAT, the state of Indiana doesn't do as well as the national average. But on the ACT, Indiana scores tend to be above the national average. Do you know if the Indiana curriculum over the years? I know ACT doesn't, you know, is a college predictor, but does Indiana curriculum align with ACT more?
No.
That's what I was gonna say. If in some states, they all take it, performance might, might decrease. If Indiana doesn't, that must be part of the explanation.
End number's smaller, but the caliber of students taking it, higher caliber. That's just a guess.
I mean, just comparing our own, we have about 57% taking the ACT, and we have 94% taking the SAT. So, we do have a much larger number. Yes, yes. And now, the other, the other piece that I just wanted to point out to you is all of this information, and I'm not sure if it will come up here on our, it's supposed to be hyperlinked. All of this information is out on our website, if it goes live. It doesn't seem to be working. I'm gonna go ahead and show you where this is. All of this data, this, it's called My Dashboard, and all of the data is out on our website. And it's under, let me actually go back to the website to show you. If you go to our main page and you go under data, we have our district dashboard. And our district dashboard has more than just our student performance data. We actually have data from a lot of different areas. But all of the student performance data, the graphs, some of the graphs look a little bit different. But you can see the trends over time of the data that we just looked at in all of their different areas, where you can see we have our math scores, our science data coming soon, our social study scores, which we didn't necessarily, we didn't, we skipped over that piece. But you can see all of those pieces. We also have enrollment data for our students. We break it down by ethnicity. And so, there's, there's a wealth of information out on our dashboard. And that's, it has it all been updated, as you can see, the update is October 29. And so, the data is updated for the current data that we do have. So, I would encourage all of you and also our public to go out and to look at that data. This is a piece, too, that, you know, as we're looking at our advanced ed piece, one of the pieces that we'll certainly direct our external review committee to be looking at this data as well. But it has, we try to keep it updated and current as we get that new data that comes in. So, I would encourage you to go out and look at those pieces.
Is the student performance disegregated by school?
In some areas, yes, it is. We have our data that we drilled down to, where is our school? We do have it drilled down to our schools. There it is. Where we have it disaggregated by our different schools, where you can click on the different schools and see the trend data over time by the different schools. Yes, you can see our different schools and their trend data for the different schools. So, other questions about the data, the dashboard, or anything in general?
I have one. The data's lovely, of course, and very encouraging. But since we're not, of course, perfect and never will be perfect, could you, could you give us an example of an initiative that either you've taken or that you're contemplating that is in direct response to what you've learned from all of this?
Yeah, certainly. You know, one of the things that, as you said, the data is never perfect. And our ultimate goal is that we want to make sure 100% of our students are meeting those baselines and moving forward. We want, we want them to even be more successful. And so, we do drill down to a student level to really look at what are the needs of that particular student? And what does their programming need to look like? One of the things where, you know, the pieces, the research is very clear, and we're seeing the success in that early intervention. The earlier we can catch them up, the better off that we are. Some of the other pieces that we look at, too, is, which is more unique to Carmel than maybe some other schools in Indiana, is not only do we look at our kids that are not passing to move them to that pass, but we also look at our students that are in that pass range, moving them up to that pass-plus. And what are, what does that cohort of data look like? And what specifically do those students need? So, we're looking at those students to how do we move them forward as well? Because as we said, they, you know, it's the basic skills assessment, and we want them to be very successful on that. So, those are pieces that we do look at. But we do drill down to that individual student level.
Amy, my question, just piggybacking on what Greg had to say. How are you involving the families to help those students who are in the bottom 5% that we are really trying to, well, we can't do it all at school. I would love that we could. But are we trying to use the community to support helping their, their success?
Well, as far as the community, we have some different programs at different schools. Like, for example, at Orchard Park for the last several years, it was back when I was the principal there as well. We have a partnership with the Rotary where we have Rotary members that come in and work one-on-one with students. In the past as well, we've also used, worked with United Way, where we had tutors that came in after school and worked with individual students. Also looking at, you know, what are the types of things that you can be doing at home to really, you know, for example, for math, to really incorporate, what does math look like in that real-world setting? To help them to think mathematically and conceptualize that. What does that look like specifically in reading and writing and putting it into that real-world setting? You know, even as young as in kindergarten, where you think about that environmental print. You know, most three-year-olds can read McDonald's, not because they can read, but because they know the golden arches. And so, but you start, and you start building that knowledge at that very young age.
And my other question, you had said there were a number of tests that were invalidated, I-Step tests this past spring. Were parents notified? How, what, what happened next?
Yes, we actually, it wasn't a large number. And in the district, we had 22 incidents. It wasn't 22 students, but because some students, their, both their language arts test and their math test were invalidated. But we had 22 incidents of students' tests being invalidated by the state because of the test interruptions. And what the parents received, they still received the, the individual, what you call the IPI scores of how the students did on each of the subtests. But because they were invalidated, they did not receive the overall scale score, and the pass did not pass. But they, they did receive some data, and it very, it very much explained why it was invalidated, and this is what the scores mean. But it wasn't, they didn't get a pass or a pass-plus.
So, for those students, though, if those were some of the students who would have fallen below the pass or even the pass-plus, have we identified them already so they are getting the services that they need to be more successful?
Right. We still, we still have their individual scores on the strands, so we can use that information. And really, the ones that, for the most part, are students that were invalidated, they were the ones that would have been in that pass-plus. Because in order to invalidate this, they looked at two different pieces. They looked at, did they, first of all, did they have an interruption to their testing? Did they take a very short amount of time or a very long amount of time? So, did they take less than 20 minutes to complete the test? And for, in our cases, the students took less than 20 minutes. And then looking at their pass performance on both the applied skills, because they have that March test, and then also if they were a student that took I-Step previously, looking at that pass performance, if they had an overall scale score of four points or less, and they had those other indicators where they took it in a very short amount of time or a very long amount of time, then they were invalidated. And the students that, in our cases, the students that were invalidated, when you look at their strands, those students, we're like, okay, those students would have been in the pass-plus. But they were still those four points, yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. That was very informative, and we look forward to hearing more about the initiatives that you will be helping to put together with Dr. Wall as we move forward. Does anybody have any comments or reports to make? Well, wonderful, meeting adjourned. Thank you.